Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to see the logo for it.
Who's making the show here today?
Chuck.
Oh, there's a little redding turd.
If you're in your...
Yeah.
It seems more...
Yeah.
It comes with a buddy down here.
Yeah.
I'm on a schedule.
Yeah.
I know why I said that.
Yeah.
Oh, there's a little redding turd.
What's your name?
My name is...
Was this your boyfriend?
Yeah.
I have a screen.
Oh, there's a little redding turd.
If we had a flock, we'd alert.
Yeah, if we had a flock.
We're not shy.
We're not shy.
We're not shy.
Good on our neighbors.
Go with those.
What's up, Davey?
Sell some houses.
What's going on?
What am I doing?
And you always.
All right, Council meeting Monday, April 2019, 7:02 PM. Prayer, Reverend Benson.
All right, welcome.
All right, Pastor Graham.
Thank you. Good to hear. Psalm 139. Search me, God, and know my heart; Test me and know my anxious thoughts. See if there is any offensive way in me, and lead me in the way everlasting. When I see the news, I see an awful lot of people that think they know how to tell what's going on in the minds of other people. And that's on both sides, all around. Doesn't seem very effective. The way, thing that I found helpful as I go about trying to serve people in the community, serve people in my congregation, do ministry, is that if I can look at myself and ask God to root out the offensive ways in me and deal with my own personal anxieties, I do a whole lot better dealing with other people who for sure have offensive ways in them and anxiety and all those things. But I can't really do anything about that. So here, the psalmist, King David, is asking God to search him so that he can better serve. So that's my prayer for us tonight. That's prayer. Lord God, heaven and th给别人, we thank you so much. We thank you for these wonderful servants that are here to serve the people of this community, people that have been elected, appointed, hired, people that are here from the community to make sure that the job that's done here is suiting the needs of everybody in our community. And we just ask, Lord, that as we converse together and go about doing the business that you have in mind for North Canton, that you would help us to know all of the things about the inner workings of our own hearts. We ask you to search us and help keep us from trying to guess what's going on in the minds of other people, reading into their thoughts, their motives, and all of those things. And just, we ask you to help each and every one of us as individuals to be the best people that you can be, best people that we can be to serve you and the people of this community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your loyalty for which you stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please go roll?
Peters.
Here.
Bolts.
Here.
Porella.
Here.
Revolt.
Here.
Eastland.
Here. Weren. Here. Bond. Here. Thank you. For your consideration and emotion, the second group has presented Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, March 4, 19. Committee Special Council Meeting Minutes, March 4, 19. Council Meeting Minutes, March 11, 19. Special Council Meeting Minutes, March 18, 2019. Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, March 18, 19. Special Council Meeting Minutes, March 21, 19. And finally, Financial Report, February 19. Motion to approve as presented in the second. Favor. Aye. Vote. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. And there's a few new faces, and there are, I think we're gonna have at least one new speaker tonight. Just a couple ground rules, you might not be aware of a five-minute time limit. I will keep the time here and at the conclusion of your comments. There are no back-and-forth discussion during public speech. If you want to talk to a council member or a member of the administration to follow up after the meeting, you will be here.
I don't think anyone will be bothering from me.
Well, you gotta stand there and say, "Oh."
Sue Platt, 801 prior. On Monday, March 18, I finished days at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. Thanks to Mr. Osborne's video, I saw and heard both the council meeting and the committee of the whole meeting. I want to publicly thank Mr. Osborne for videotaping and recording the meeting and placing them on YouTube. Without Mr. Osborne's video and recording, I would not have heard Ms. Brown's honest and succinct explanation of the live-streaming problems experienced at council meetings. I realize videotaping and recording takes time from Mr. Osborne, but it is an excellent communication and backup tool when other technologies fail. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Sue. Dave, you'll come on.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is David Linsen-Begler. I live at 216 Viking Street. I always refer to it as the place behind the old special Chevrolet area. That's where people know where I'm at. What I'd like to dispel from you tonight is one of the amendments that you have here in town. It's an ordinance, 4511.214, 4511.215, concerning golf carts within the city of North Canton. And what it states in any hand, if the local government has approved golf cart travel on streets and roads with a 35 mile an hour or slower speed limit, you have not passed an ordinance allowing golf carts to be operated on city streets of North Canton. My objective tonight is to present to you, I would like to change on that ordinance. I'm 67 years old. I traveled for the last five years, I've had three golf carts. And this is the first time that I knew that we weren't allowed to run them on city streets of North Canton. I sent a letter to Mr. Bolts. And in that letter, his concern was that the inspection criteria and everything to get your license plates. There is a place on Wells Avenue that sells golf carts, that's the closest one, Fairway. Then we'll ask you if you're gonna do this as an off-road vehicle. If you are, one of the first things they hand you is this. This is what the state highway control requires you to do to a golf cart to make it street legal. This is at your own expense. If I may, quickly, and my golf cart, by the way, is sitting out front for anybody to take a look at. It's licensed, it's insured, it has to be as required. I carry the same insurance on it that I do my car, $500,000 mill. That's my choice. But you gotta have front rear license plates, you gotta have a valid driver's license, you gotta have proof of insurance card. The steering is inspected, they inspect the tires. You need the headlights visible for a thousand feet, minimum of one taillight, which I have. My cart is set up just like a car. You have headlights, two taillights, illuminated rear license plate rack, two red reflectors visible at 300 feet. This is new, this just went into effect last year by the sheriff's department. You have orange in the front, two, one on each side posted on my safety glass window. You have two red ones on the back, so you can see me. Two working taillights, which I have, they also double as my turn signals. Emergency brake. The brake, and the cart must stop within 40 feet at 20 mile per hour. Horn is required, has to be audible for 500 feet. Exhaust, if it's an internal combustion engine. Rearview mirrors, you can have two types. You can have the little one, like you have in a normal car, or like mine, goes clear across the top. It's what they call a five panel rearview mirror. I can see from one sidewalk to the other sidewalk. Windshield. Windshield wiper, which I have, I've installed that myself. Self-illuminating, electrical mechanical turn signal, visible front and rear. I have it, installed myself. Seat belts, installed myself. I have it currently, this is my third cart in the last five years. This cart was bought as a two-person cart, and that's what I have. I have two sets of seat belts in the front. Mr. Peters checked my cart out. He sat in it and looked at the belts and everything and seen that all the safety stuff was there. And it must not travel more than 20 mile per hour. That is, that's the current requirements to walk into the Department of Motor Vehicles and be just like any other, any other citizen.
Dave, if I could stop you, we're at the five-minute time limit. If I could ask you, the paperwork that you have there, if you could, Kathy, would you mind taking some of that and running copies for the rest of council for our, for our reference?
Or you'd be able to scan it and just send it to us all that way, do whatever it seems.
Yeah. And I appreciate it, Dave, and we'll be talking about this in the future, so thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I wanna work.
It's your first time too.
Yeah. I knew it was kinda long, just to just...
Yeah, hang on, Dave, you can talk to us afterwards.
He needs some background.
Yeah, we'll be around if you wanna hang around afterward.
Okay, that's his question. She...
Anyone else wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Larry Tripp, 11270 Staple, North Canton. Before, I was so rudely interrupted by council president during the meeting of March 21, but the following are the exact words I wanted to speak that evening. Messers Fonte, Revolt, along with councilperson Eastling, what has this council been discussing the better part of the past seven months? Yes, Main Street business or business district, whatever it's called. Supposedly a tool to drive new business into North Canton along Main Street, but still unfinished after seven months. So what does this city do and what will council ultimately approve? Is a request of 144,000 as part of a plan to move city council chambers away from Main Street. It's like, do as I say, but not as I do. This move is meant to be a project to produce synergies within its operation and provide more upfront relations with its clientele. How many times have we heard that from a business, only to find out a year later that the business closed? Since Mr. Graham became city engineer, we have heard nothing but praise for this department. Perhaps, there may have been some synergies to be realized because of the culture and work ethics of a former city engineer, but I would be hard-pressed to believe the same work ethics now exist within that department. In fact, I believe it to be a slap to the face to Mr. Graham in the engineering department. Remember, employees follow the lead of their surrounding and leadership. One only has to look at city council when it comes to wasted time worth of ethics attendance, et cetera. Who knows, after the meeting, after the reading of the cancellation of the public hearing of March 25, 2019, it's probably reasonable to assume the tabling of ordinance 3-2019 comes next, and we now see seven months of nothing by council. I would suggest slow down with this move, wait and see what transpires with the safety sanitation. If and when this becomes a reality, there will probably be more remodeling within City Hall after the departure of the police department. Actually, Mr. Osborne made a good point suggesting City Hall receive a second floor. That along with the new safety center would certainly enhance the landscape of the Main Street business district. Mr. Fiorio, if council and City Hall had only vaguely listened to some four or five years ago when I suggested a part-time lawyer, part-time city planner, and a part-time city engineer employed by the city, we would probably already be in the process of seeing construction of a new safety center and a workable Main Street business legislation.
Mr. Fonte, thank you for showing some concern about my stress when we talked the other day, but everything says fine, everything's fine. So, council president, the law, the law director, and assistant clerk, get your great pleasure to try and manipulate, intimidate, humiliate a year shorter than an 80-year-old North Canton senior citizen, being me. Mr. Revolt's, Mr. Revolt's intimate remarks, one meaning to take off their clothes and take a hard look at themselves in the mirror, it happened. A couple nights up there, saw Mr. Fonte, I did exactly that. I looked and I said, "Not too bad," noting I had a fairly sound mind, good memory, all my limbs, no water, no Depends, all in all, nothing, nothing too bad. That evening, I thanked the man upstairs for my help and said I had one word request, that I'd be, lived to be a hundred, and in 2040, be able to address North Canton City Council. He welcomed my request and said on one condition, no more evictions from city council meetings, and asked why my request. I merely said, "I wanted to laugh at the 2040 council president as he paraphrased President Trump's remarks of 2018." I can see it now. Him and I laughed, and he says, "You must have had a leader that didn't have the mental capacity as needed, dumb as a rock and lazy as hell." You know, Council Peters and Law Director, the older I get, the less I care what the two of you think. Try to humility or whatever, have fun. Therefore, the older I get, the more I enjoy life.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Anyone else wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Would I be allowed to pass this back flyer out before I begin speaking? Yeah. Pass it over here to the...
Here, I'll take them and pass them on. Thank you, sir.
My name is Matthew Milliken, and I live at 407 West Maple Street. And I came here to talk about the laws that pertain to keeping chickens on your property. The laws that were passed about keeping chickens on your property, to my knowledge, were passed about six to seven years ago, mainly due to a complaint filed by someone who doesn't even live in the city. And some of the laws, I think, are very practical for the type of urban environment that many people live in. And I would just like to list three of them, and then a possible starting point for how the laws could be changed to make it more acceptable or more, or protect people more that contain or keep chickens on their property. The first law, that chickens are never allowed to free-range in the yard, they must always be penned in a coop that is 18 square feet or less. Dogs are allowed to be loose in the yard. And if you're ever walking, dogs are usually barking at you as you walk. And if you've ever passed by a chicken, they don't really bark at you. You aren't allowed to have roosters, and I'm not arguing for that change. They just simply graze, and they might cock their head and look at you very curiously, but that's about all they will do, they won't harm people. And I think they should be considered to be allowed to free-range in a fenced-in yard. Debatable whether it could be a chain fence or a solid wood fence, but I think there should be some more freedoms there. Also, I previously mentioned that 18 square foot is currently what we limit chickens to, and they must always be penned up in that. Many chicken publications recommend that if you allow your chickens to free-range, you should have at least four square feet. So this is three square feet of chicken. And so if you've ever seen three chickens in 18 square feet, there's not a lot of room for them to eat and move around or scratch. And it doesn't promote an ethical keeping and treatment of chickens and, and the birds on your property. And if we were not allowed to keep chickens in a fenced-in yard or to let them loose in a fenced-in yard to graze, then it is recommended that you keep them in a pen of 10 square feet at least for chicken, based on most major chicken publications. And so obviously, 18 square feet is significantly less than a third of the 60 square feet recommended for keeping chickens in a permanent enclosure. Finally, I would like to mention that the third law that causes a lot of people with issues is that chickens must always be kept for 20 feet from the property line or 50 feet from another residence. And maybe people that have chickens that live on lots where this is not possible. So this bans chickens in a lot of lots. We have requirements to keep yards clean and not smelling. You know, those laws are there and still available for people to address, anybody who would not keep their chicken or yard in an acceptable state. And so I think there could be some easing in this law to make it acceptable for people who live in an urban environment or a more urban lot, especially located in the center of town. So I hope that you'll consider, consider these articles and consider, this has maybe a starting point to give people a little more room to own chickens, and I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
121307, Tiger Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I want to bring the council thinking aware of a property in 602 East Maple. This is a corner lot on the corner of Pershing and East Maple. For some reason, they were allowed to build a house on this very, very, very small lot. I think they needed three variances, and this was our illustrious Mr. Bolts from years ago that allowed this. This was for an elderly couple who has since moved out, and now there are some younger people in there, and they wanted to put in a pool. And they also wanted six-foot privacy fences up. And of course, as we know, all these corner lots are considered to have two front yards, as you can see from the street, on two sides. They've been before the planning commission, the ZDA at least twice, maybe even three times, and turned down. Well, today I drove by the house, and actually, my wife did it first. They're putting in a above-ground pool that's probably the sides are up to your shoulders. It encompasses the entire backyard. It is an atrocious site. Now, I haven't done much digging as far as what the code allows. I vaguely remember that you can only populate, or you must, I guess you just need to leave 60% of your rear yard free of structures. Like I said, we're probably talking 90% of the backyard is this monstrous pool. I already talked to Mr. Van Gundy, and he's looking into it, I guess. I don't harbor anything against the individuals. I don't know why they bought a corner lot where they wanted privacy and needed fencing that the city would not allow now, and want to put in a large pool in an undersized, small yard. This kind of dovetails with what I've been begging and asking this city. If you want to do economic development and forget all this CRA giveaways, let's, zone out of existence R50. They do not need anybody's needs. You don't have parking, you don't have a place for snow. You can't even protect it in a fire if you had to, because the houses are all so close together. R50 needs to go. And we need to maintain our existing code instead of cutting a break here, cutting a break there. As I said, when this house was built, they were given three variances, and we've all heard the old saying, if somebody eats, they're gonna take a bite. Well, the new owners move in, they want more variances in order to utilize the property in the way that they see fit. You cannot utilize these small lots. But I'd like each one of you to drive by and look at the monstrosity that we're all gonna have to see, because you're not gonna be able to put a privacy fence on the Pershing side of the property. It is hugely aesthetically ugly as sin. It is hugely aesthetically ugly as sin. And whether there's any kind of a variation, you know, we all seen pools in backyards, and they generally take a good size of the yards, but there ought to be some differentiation in our code versus a flush pool, a regular in-ground pool, versus one that's way up out of the ground. There needs to be larger yard requirements or something. But go by and look at this. This is not what we want our neighborhoods to look like. I'm.
Thank you, Chuck. Anyone else wish to address Council?
Bill Net, 519 Bagby Street, Southeast.
I'm sorry, go over to the again.
519, my name?
Spell your last name.
K-N-E-P-P.
And the name of your street?
519 Bagby Street, Southeast. You have all talked about moving and are doing so, moving all the city services to the City Hall to be better for all concerned and be able to manage better. Good idea. This is the first reason why we need everyone here on Council to agree that we need to have a new safety center building. First priority of any city government should be the safety of its citizens. To all the safety forces under one roof, not only for a one-stop shop, but also for the well-being and morale for our men and women who work in these conditions that are not, that are now subject to, to have, to have you guys be invited to, and I know you've been invited by the chiefs, to go to these buildings, these facilities, and see for yourself how cramped these places really are. I know when I had, when I was on apartment fire, I came up here a lot of times, invited everybody doctor for open house. Somebody would come, and someone wouldn't understand, you know. I mentioned months ago, twenty-five years ago, there was five pounds of stuff in a two-pound bag, and today, we got thirty pounds of this stuff growing in the same bag, and I don't think I'm overstating this. If you go through the building, you'll see what I'm talking about. You shouldn't have to ask to come down and go through these buildings, but do it on your own. I have been privileged to sit and listen to three out of four of the architects for the proposal of this building, and it will be done, it'll be done right, whoever gets picked to do the building. Patrick and his team is doing a great job, and it's going to be an add-on to their community once this building is built. I know that our people, I know there's people out there who are for the safety building, but are not for the proposed site that this building is being built on. I was on the Hoover EPA committee, and I recently talked to one of the Hoover vice presidents about this issue, who is also on this committee. He sees no problem here. The problem, the company, as he told me, did all the EPA ask, and some more. I feel that US EPA, state EPA sees no problems here, and these companies that were, whoever we pick, as architect or architect, if they can do their research and see no problem there, then we should go ahead and go with this. Our original site for the first safety building twenty-five years ago was just north of the fire station, north of Charlotte Street, and it would be, the new bill, it would be, the old building was going to be just west of where the new building is going to be built on there. So if you go north there across Charlotte Street, you'll see that big parking lot, that's where we were originally going to build the building. I'm excited about, I'm excited about this. We never got this far before in our original plans, for a safety building for a place fire AMS. Again, I'm asking you all to tour our present facilities and see what our men and women have to work in and work with. The time is now, it's past due. I know we get, I know we'll get the support we need for this building to be an add-on for our city, and especially, it'd be great for our safety forces. I also want to thank all the people who have worked with me, Patrick, Laura, Martin, Daryl, and the mayor over the past two and a half years, getting us to where we're at today. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Anyone else wish to address Council? We will move on to old business, and before we get to that, I just wanted to address the Chairwoman of Finance and Property, my apologies, ordinance thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seven. All appropriations, all required three readings, or one reading, but I did not waive the rules of council on the last council meeting, so put it back on, and I'm just going to go and we're going to suspend the rules for three readings and under suspension for the second reading for these three. Number thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seven. Daryl, did you have something?
Yeah, I've got, I got it. Mine's a kind of point word that's related to yours. My question is this, is that we gave these, particularly thirteen and twenty, a first reading to be subsequently reconsidered, but in the process, the mayor assigned that ordinance. And I don't, my question is, can legislation, if it's been signed, can it get second reading?
It can, it hasn't been published. It was incorrectly signed, but it hasn't been published, and it was pulled before it was published.
Excellent, great.
Any other questions? Give one more.
Yeah, I would, I would, given for, again, I was eight and nine, I would ask Council, because these have been discussed and committed, they have received a first reading, I would ask that we amend each of them to include an emergency clause. And the reason is, particularly for the generator, we are in tornado season, and I think we would like to have that generator replaced as soon as possible. With regard to the flags, we are rapidly approaching Memorial Day. So that would be my suggestion as we consider these.
I think we have to, Tim, can you weigh in on that?
Yes, sir, because they're appropriations, if we waive the requirement for the three readings as soon as they're signed by the mayor, just like emergency. Yes. Because these are each appropriations, once they're waived the requirement for three readings and they're signed by the mayor, just like emergency legislation, it will become law, just in the same way. So simply waiving the requirement for the three readings is sufficient, we won't have to put an emergency clause with.
So cases of war.
Yes, sir. And you won't have to, because we have to rewrite the ordinance with the requirement.
Let me suggest something. I have had some reservations about this entire process, in respect that there may be a new approach, but I think we ought to have, when we have appropriation of this nature, it is new, although we called it supplemental, it ineffective something new that was unbudgeted, may have been unbudgeted, not containing the appropriation, we ought to have three readings as a rule, and I think maybe we should get back to that if we can. Be just my suggestion. You mean if it's money that was donated, or if it's money from the budget? If it's coming from the budget, and we have not appropriated it, and it, when the budget is adopted, it is not a supplemental, it is a new program, it is a new issue, and therefore, it should be treated just like we would any other ordinance. And I think that way, we don't have this mix-up on whether it's one reading or whatever. We give it, give them three, include an emergency clause, and then.
Do a half-dollar amount to it, let's say if it's over twenty-five thousand, we just say it doesn't happen.
I just, I don't think it matters. And that's just, I think that's, it's really, really clean.
You're saying that it's a must? What happens if we do need it?
Yeah, you just kind of.
Emergency. Okay, sorry. If I could stop for a second, this is a legislative meeting, we can discuss this in committee, why don't we do this in our next available committee meeting, that way we can have a more comprehensive discussion regarding this, but this agenda, or these, or these pieces, and thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seven, being appropriations.
And you're going to give these three readings?
No.
You're going to only give them two?
Two readings. Waive the rules of council, because time is of the essence for, if I'm not mistaken, generator and flags for Memorial Day. And flags for Memorial Day, correct. In twenty-seven and eighteen, if you're intent on moving forward. Okay, that was our intent last council made, so that is my intent for this one. Waive the rules, it'll become law on the second reading.
You're saying thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Correct? Is that around the same age?
I thought Tim said you had three of them. You have the authority to waive the ordinance.
Okay.
So I'd waive it, then it would require three.
One revision, sorry.
Yes.
So in the future, you're saying, Daryl, about three readings, nothing other?
You can talk about that in a minute.
Got it.
Okay. Chairwoman, where?
Okay, so, do we sort of take them individually?
Yeah.
Yeah, take them individually. Okay, so we've talked about ordinance thirteen, appropriation for the flags, I think we're up to ten thousand five hundred. If there are any other questions or concerns, we move to adopt.
Second.
Wait, we need a motion.
You have a read?
Oh, we have a read, yeah.
I'm sorry, I should, I turned over to you. I should have motioned.
Okay.
Ma'am, I'm motioning second to read. Motion to read, second.
In ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds of the City of North Canton.
Need to vote on that motion.
All in favor?
All favor. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. My apologies. I'm voting out, this is a committee meeting, I'm in a legislative meeting, I'm trying to, now we're back on track.
We're getting this, because the first one going, then we're going to be ready.
In ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds of the City of North Canton, donations received and pledged for placing additional United States flags along Main Street to the unappropriated resources of the General Trust Fund to the General Trust MSB US flagging account.
Thank you. Now, Chairwoman, where? My apologies.
Okay, so as I said, this is for the authorization of flags, ten thousand five hundred dollars in appropriations, sorry, inappropriate resources to the General Trust Fund. Thank you, Donald. If you have no other questions or concerns, I move to adopt.
Thank you for your support.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Nay.
Nay. Let's record a flag, number of vote, voted nay. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Number of vote, nay. And finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance number thirteen dash nineteen.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Daryl? Motion carries. All right, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, second reading ordinance number twenty dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
In ordinance authorizing the appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the City of North Canton funds from the unappropriated resources of the Capital Improvement Fund to Contract Payments Fund for purchase and installation of a generator capable of providing electricity for complete operation of all departments in City Hall in the event of power outage.
Yes, Chairwoman, where?
So we've talked about this, and this is for the purchase and installation of a generator. And we receive bids, and we move forward. It's of the essence.
Motion to adopt.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Number of vote, nay. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings for ordinance number twenty dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Number of vote, nay. And finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance number twenty dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
And finally, number of vote. Okay, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, second reading ordinance number twenty-five dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
In ordinance authorizing the City of North Canton to adopt a general fund allowance policy.
Hold up. Chairwoman, where?
We talked about this before as well, which is a proactive approach to financial management. Nor you've talked about it before. Is there anything else you want to say? I think they, if you read the packet, it really lays it out very well for purpose background requirements. It's a good, it's good. Anything else you want to say?
Thank you, Nor, I have nothing else.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So I move to adopt.
Some move. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, second reading ordinance number twenty-seven dash nineteen?
Some move.
Is there a second?
A second.
A second, top of seconds. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
In ordinance appropriating funds funding unappropriated resources of the general funds in the general government informational services account with purposes of moving the city's engineering department from the civic center to City Hall, and moving the city council's chambers to the civic center, together with upgrading the civic center's audiovisual equipment for city council and other city board's provisions, the rental for community services.
Thank you. Chairwoman, where?
So we have discussed this a number of times. The purpose is to move the city's engineering department up here, and then we would move down to the civic center. Is there more discussion at this point? Yes.
No question. Pat, how, I don't know that we specifically saw how you came up with your one, one, three. How's it, how's it broken down? What's audiovisual, what's moving, what's setting up, what's? Well, you know what, we dealt with this, and if we did, I don't remember really looking at it. Go ahead.
It was actually a spreadsheet.
Say it.
There was a spreadsheet. It broke it down between the furniture, the audiovisual equipment, contractor fees, moving costs, everything with the technical. It was down with the recording, upgrading all of this, so it consolidates it into one.
So now that it has to be bid out, I guess that's my question, are we doing it mostly?
Well, not in house. It's not one inclusive amount, so it's all individual fees.
Right.
It's your general contract.
Right. Okay.
So the IT provider to contractor to the living company, and they're all under fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, we still have to bid out, if we have a specific project that's going on, it's okay? Because it's under fifty thousand, or is it?
Fifty.
All pieces.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Daryl. You know, we, this particular space that we occupy consumes approximately by, by rough guessing, about twenty-five percent of City Hall's space, maybe more, maybe a third. When you think about it, and I think this goes to Larry's question, when you think about it, this space is used for twelve hours a month. See? I mean, it's, during the day, it's empty. Going back to my comment about taking off all our clothes and looking in the mirror, if we look at many of the problems we've had, I think we would make that comment again. It's not pretty. But, it's, if we honestly acknowledge some of the problems we've encountered, it's because we need, we lack the kind of supervision that we. it's because we need, we lack the kind of supervision that we need to have by having our people in the building. There's a temptation to say that our current present will exist into the future. And I, I think that, although we're delighted that Rob and his team are here, we may not be as fortunate in the future. Again, it speaks to the importance of having our professional staff managed in one location. I was around when we moved engineering across the street. I can tell you in retrospect, I think it was a mistake. We should have had that team in this building. And therefore, Mr. President, I'm gonna move for that reason. For the adoption of this. I'm gonna vote no, but I, I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
Later, later.
But it needs to be, I think this needs to be done.
Just to reflect my immediate feelings, but it should not reflect any, any criticism on Rob and...
Absolutely not, no.
No one done that to me, no.
Absolutely not.
He's done a tremendous job, so.
Yeah, he is, and, and again, it's, it's down, it's the down-low stuff. You know, we live in, it's pretty good now, but the reality is we may not be as fortunate in the future. And again, I think that one of the lessons learned here is that we probably could have had better supervision. How do we get that part of this having it under, under the roof across the corner from our administrator, who's supervised, so we don't have issues?
We have a good set of leaders, and it's nice to work as a team together.
Yes.
For the same common direction, which is to get us to the goal line, which is to, you gotta cut costs, be efficient, and get things done, not like politicians, but like entrepreneurs. And T R E, P R E, N E U R, got it?
That was good.
Good comments.
Can I just make one comment on that? You know, uh, back when I first started as the City of North, back in, uh, when I served as the, sure, back in two thousand and ones, I remember that we had multiple locations for the departments, and there were times that various department employees didn't see each other for the better part of a year because of the various locations. And so since then, you know, you have our administrator, and you have, uh, weekly department head meetings, so there's a constant communication. But when you have people in the same location, the information flows, there's, there's a much less of a void of, uh, communication, and it just turns into synergy and, and teamwork, as Donald was saying. So I think you'll see better performance. Just have another video there.
All right, Darryl's motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Number of vote, nay. And may I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
Some move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Number of vote, nay. And finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance twenty-seven, nineteen?
Some move. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, on to new business. I only have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance number twenty-eight dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
In ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of North Canton on Board of Control approval to enter to a project development agreement with Johnson Controls Team to develop facility improvement measures, a copy of which is attached here to incorporate here in and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Chairwoman, where?
So we started talking about this last week, and there were a couple items, I think, that I think you already requested, or, God, I can't remember what this was, who requested what. But, uh, kind of looking at how we can explore potential energy and operational savings by upgrading certain systems or equipment, and there was a whole list of different items, um, that were attached to that, and that is all in here as well. Um, so I, did we receive those other items?
Some, some of us did.
Okay. Darryl, you got them? Okay.
Yeah, my, my point would be, I'm going to pass the first reading, but I'd like to review, um, the record with other communities. I think we owe it to, to look at this a little closer.
Yeah.
Obviously, uh, could be a great idea for us, but let's, um, let's evaluate a little further. That's my, that's my point.
So what are you looking for?
I wanted to see what, give them some other communities, and if Darryl has that information, I'm sure we could all get past, pass that on.
Mr. President, someone had asked to have this placed on emergency last week, so we changed the language on ordinance, so if they need to be changed back, or are we just gonna go all readings?
Why don't we just give it a first reading?
First reading. Yeah, we'll take the first reading without, even though the mercy clause is in there. We'll just do the first reading.
Thank you.
And we've moved on to the first reading of ordinance twenty-eight dash two nineteen?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, next, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance number twenty-nine dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
In ordinance authorizing the supplemental appropriation of funds of the City of North Canton to the appropriated from the unappropriated resources of the general fund to the general government professional services account in the amount of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and the unappropriated resources of the water fund, the Water Administration Professional Services account in the amount of sixty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars for the cost proposed project development agreement with Johnson Controls Team.
Chairwoman, where?
So this goes really hand in hand, I guess, with ordinance number twenty-eight, and then these are just the monies that would be attached to, I think, of the projects, aren't they? So I would, if there are any other questions about that, I'd say that we could give that our first reading as well, and then kind of just move along in the same fashion.
I'm sorry.
Is this one of those ones where you only need one, one reading of?
There's no urgency on it.
It's appropriations.
Yeah, it is an appropriation.
And the reason that I ask it is that obviously, even if you task ordinance number twenty-nine nineteen, still wouldn't be able to afford to have twenty-eight nineteen. So to make it less confusing later, which, you know, is an objective, if this is an appropriation ordinance that can fall under the rule of one, you suspend the rules, I would recommend you do that for twenty-nine nineteen, so that all we have to do then is twenty-eight nineteen, or not twenty-eight nineteen.
Why just won't suspend the rules for three readings for this?
Or cover that?
Is that what you're saying?
An obso-, no, I was just making, I was pointing dispensing with twenty-nine nineteen, but not... I was, was, uh, just making an observation that you could dispense with twenty-nine nineteen, going on suspended, it's an appropriation, it's done, and then we only have to come back to twenty-eight nineteen down the road if council decides to move forward. If council decides to move forward, it doesn't really matter about twenty-eight nineteen.
Do we have a question? Tim?
Don't have a question, but they appear aired. If, I, I guess, being the devil, say, with devil's advocate, is if you don't pass twenty-eight, what do you do with twenty-nine?
You have to go back and appeal.
So, so can we just go both next week, next?
We'll do the first reading tonight, and then we'll just go concurrently with twenty-eight nineteen.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions regarding twenty-nine nineteen?
No.
Do you have a motion to adopt the first reading?
Some move.
Sorry. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance number thirty dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Tim?
In ordinance authorizing the reclassification of funds of the City of North Canton within various budget line items during fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen?
Thank you, Chairwoman, where?
Laura, do you want to mention anything about this, and you talked about it in the meeting as well, but...
Sure, just to reiterate, we talked about it, this is due to some of the changes within departments that we've had since the original budget was passed at the end of twenty eighteen for this year, uh, both the building permits department and then the council law department.
And that's pretty, which, I feel like we do this every year, right, with the change and...
We do throughout the year. We knew that this one would be coming because of building permits, that we, we didn't have the final numbers on safe bill when we did the budget.
Right. Okay. Okay, so are there any other questions that we should adopt? Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And may I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
Some move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Number of vote, nay?
Wait, that doesn't have any...
Yeah, that does, that doesn't have anything.
It's appropriations.
Got it.
So we have six, yank, one dang.
And five.
I'm sorry, motion and a second, motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance thirty dash nineteen?
Some move. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Number of vote, nay? Okay. Moving on, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance number thirty-one dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Tim?
In ordinance approving, confirming, and accepting a sixty-foot sidewalk easement by and between the City of North Canton and Tumira and Camarillo, Davenport, and Parsonel number ninety-two dash zero eight seven two nine, Stark County, Ohio, to construct an American's with Disabilities Act compliant sidewalk around an existing traffic signal cone pole, pardon, not cone, pole, located in the center of the existing sidewalk, declaring the same to be an emergency.
Chairman, fun.
Uh, this is one over on the south side of Everhard Road. Uh, when they did, uh, work on the road, the pole happened to be in the middle, so you can't get walkers or wheelchairs around it, so, uh, we got the easement for the neighbor, so they're just gonna carve a spot out so you can whittle around it, about sixty square feet. It's on an emergency due to the time of year, we want to get this thing done, so I've moved that we pass this on one reading.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to let her reflect the city's thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Davenport, granting this season. We could have been required to take it by any domain, uh, action, which would have taken many, many months.
And a lot of dollars.
A lot of dollars. So the community is grateful.
There was a motion and a second. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance number thirty-one dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance number thirty-two dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Tim?
In ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration of the City of North Canton to advertise and receive bids according to specifications now on file on the Director's office.
You're done.
Seven, oh, I beg pardon, two, nine. Okay, um, I was on the third, three, I'm on the third, two, yeah, thank you. In ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of North Canton through the Board of Control to enter to an agreement by and between the City of North Canton and Stark County Board of Commissioners for repaving of Apple Grove Street Northeast and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman, fun.
Um, this is a, this is an agreement between us and the Stark County Commissioners because, uh, they, they're taking in some of the money, so we need that agreement to go along with the next ordinance, uh, thirty-three, so I move, we pass that as an emergency.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
Some move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules ordinance number thirty-two, nineteen?
Some move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance number thirty-three dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Tim?
In ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration of the City of North Canton to advertise and receive bids according to specifications now on file on the Director's office and authorizing the Mayor on Board of Control approval to enter to a contract for the repaving of Apple Grove Street Northeast at a total cost not to exceed five hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman, fun.
Roughly at sixty-six hundred square, or sixty-six hundred linear feet, and just to remind everybody, it's gonna be polymer, not regular blacktop, which will hold up, uh, to more frigid temperatures, it's more expensive, but very wise investment for the busier roads, especially with the troubles we have at the square of Apple Grove and Cleveland Avenue. We're gonna get a grant for two hundred thousand of it, and we're, fill me in on the breakdown, there's like eighty-five from Stark County, two hundred from, uh, Ohio Works.
Yes, right, the remainder would be, uh, around five hundred eighty-five thousand in our estimate.
So this is gonna be on an emergency, so I move that we get this passed. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance number thirty-four dash nineteen?
Some move.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Tim?
In ordinance authorizing the Director of Administration of the City of North Canton to advertise and receive bids according to specifications now on file on the Director's office and authorizing the Mayor on Board of Control approval to enter to a contract with Glenwood Street Southwest Water Line Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman, or Chairman, I'm sorry. Thank you, Chairman, or Chairman, I'll say.
I guess this is exactly how it reads. This is a discussing committee on budgeting, so I have a motion to adopt.
Second.
Under emergency.
Yep. There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, may I have a motion and a second to read by title only first reading ordinance number thirty-five dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, attempt?
An ordinance reviewing and replacing the North Canton ordinance number eighty-nine dash zero nine Stark County Water Quality Regulations of Stark Solar Waters two thousand and eighteen update to the same and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman, I'll say.
Yes, also discuss just updated regulations, again, move to adopt.
Hi, Ben.
All in favor?
Underverse.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finally, a motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes, let's say, agenda reports. Deputy Director, for you.
Thank you. First report, I'll give a little update on summer staffing. We are starting early and we've quickly hired ten summer seasonal workers that'll be working in our parks and recreation department, our street department, and our water treatment plant. Still a couple open, still, if anyone knows of anyone. This year also, we'll be hiring two interns to do more work on the administrative and finance side too. Also, just one other thing I wanted to open the IT side, as you all are aware, back end is our IT lab. And they provide us with a quarterly phishing report, which is letting us know about the, um, you may have received after emails is what they call, where they're posing to see if they can sort of trick into clicking on something to kind of, you know, suspicious, they'll say you might have speeding ticket, you might say you're off on three sixty-five, it's outdated. And they're just trying to protect municipality against, you know, cyber attacks.
How are we doing on that?
Well, I get a report and staff members, it's all council people show up. And after clicking on more than two, an email is sent from them which has a link for required training. What I identified is that most people weren't clicking on that because that too, I think you weren't sure if that was another phishing or spoof or spam email, because it did say EUSA, because that's the type, that's the venue they use for the training. So we're changing that, so it will say training@northcantonohio.com. So always hover over an email address to see the full address, but that one you should see as training. If you hover over it, it will be at northcantonohio.com. And if you do get one of those, please click it open, please click the link and watch the required training and you'll come off the report.
So if we get one, that means that we go through the.
Which you have, yes.
Expedition.
And they just want to provide that training to make you more aware of the exposure that it puts.
Are you familiar with training, yeah, that?
I watched all the videos.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I guess as we begin in April, it's orange barrel season. And we've got a jump so far on twenty nineteen paving contract, contractors coming to town. I think we've got twenty-nine catch basins, a big catch basin work tomorrow. Another couple of weeks of concrete curbing gutter work, kind of following that. And a couple of streets that don't need that type of work, they're actually talking about the asphalt plan opening this week and maybe a million repaving within this week, next week. So it's really moving along, I think by the end of the month, we're gonna have a lot of that behind us. I'm happy about that. Actually, I've always worried about temperature, I didn't think I had to worry about temperature in spring, but it's cold, it's cold. But I think we'll be okay. And also, a contractor on the street paving is also our Elmore Waterline Contractor. That's kind of a late project from last year. And when he finishes those catch basins tomorrow, he's gonna jump over and start on Elmore. In fact, they got a lot of materials delivered, water lines there today. I know the neighbors have been asking and that's about ready to start. Also, another double one from last year is our East Bay Waterline and roadway construction project. The mainline water line is all in and we have half of the fifty-nine customers tied into the new line now from the old line. That's kind of a slow process, but that's moving on. Been the odd outage out there, but it's to be expected with the water line project. But yeah, all in all, moving on, ready to get the legislation tonight, thank you. We reported way too, so we've got a lot coming. And disaster, residents have some patience with me, I mean, it's gonna be a inconvenience.
It really is.
But we'll get through it, we always do. And, uh, so I have stuff ahead for you. One of the things we looked at in the last couple of months is the timing of our traffic signal with the North Main and Apple Grove intersection, especially in that PMP, we noticed the traffic was really backing up for that eastbound traffic, especially if they want to make a left turn to go north. So we studied that, actually kind of firm, checked the timing and kind of see how we were optimizing our time, it really be working. You know, still, no matter what you do, there's sixty seconds in a minute. But the key is, is to, our traffic control is allowed for tiny day. If it's on PMP, we can put in a different timing than the AMP for the traffic going opposite directions. So we've done that, modeled that, and just last week went out and put that in the field. And we feel that it's really working, when we take a look at it. Before, people were reporting maybe two or even three cycles in the evening, heading eastbound to turn left to go north. Now that's clear enough in one cycle. I've seen it myself, our traffic engineers look at it and the traffic type condition, look at it from the city's standpoint. So early on, knock on wood, we think that's really helping. And any observations you have or constituents have, please let me know, because we can always complete that. So I guess that'll be a big improvement. Because once we can't really get traffic through that intersection efficiently, then we have to look capacity, which is lanes, and that'd be really expensive. So we better optimize the signal first.
Just a question on Everhard project, and I know we're just responsible for the water lines. So over the weekend, it was just really backed up again because we've gone down to one lane. I understand we don't control those lanes, but are those things that, obviously those are all North Canton people typically coming from that direction?
Sure.
Are those things that we can call you about and say, hey, could they check the lanes? Could they be more efficient during the weekends, or, you can call someone, or?
Yeah, any complaints that we have, you know, we have five weekly progress meetings, in fact, I have one tomorrow morning.
Okay.
The construction team on that.
Okay.
And, um, but it doesn't happen for like two weeks. I mean, if we have a question, I call it, we're counting it, a construction management firm. And if they have a detour or something set up like they do now, because they're building on the north side of the east leg of Everhard,
Yeah.
like in front of the Zolies and stuff.
Yes.
So they're down in one lane, of course, that backs up over the road and tracks them up the door.
That's what she's talking about.
Yeah.
That's what she can.
It was back to Alberta on Saturday.
It was like the light is, well, there's nowhere to go, but.
Yeah.
And then my other question was, so in that property, I mean, it's packed in there all the time. So was there never, and maybe it's just we don't have the width in the road, but was there never thoughts to put a little turn lane in there? I mean, you know, you get stuck at that light all the time and you just aren't kind of surprised with that much traffic, having not internally.
And which lane?
What do you think about, right past the, at least if you're coming.
Heading west?
Uh, if you're coming into North Canton on Everhard.
Southway?
Yeah. No, no, on Everhard.
Everhard.
And then just if you, if there's no left-hand turn to go into Southheads or.
Oh, that.
No, right.
That made me take care of this project, let me take a look at the planes and signaling signs.
Doesn't, yeah, I can't tell, it doesn't look like it, but it just is always like shocking to me that we're doing all this work and they did not put a second lane in there. And I know it's not us.
I'm pretty sure the new project will have an eastbound Everhard and a turn left and north into the plaza there.
Okay.
But I would love to check that.
I've had a lot of questions on that shocking thing, and they all think it's us.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
He was, well. Good, thank you, Robert, good.
Yes, a few items, we have, first off with the road paving, this is the best start to road paving that we've had in eighteen years.
That's true.
I mean, all the projects are out, and normally the temperature, we were concerned about the temperature when it was October, you know, just trying to finish and put the projects in. So, I mean, you've done a great job, so we can start with overhead. Also, we had over the weekend, there was a truck that was transporting gravel to Little League, and their environmental response was excellent. The truck had broke a hydraulic line and leaked some hydraulic fluid at the parking lot. And, you know, that's a critical area because we have, you know, water wells in that area. And the response by the administration and by our water treatment plant was excellent. We had sun throw out there and they cleaned things up at the time of the manner, and there was no negative impact to the environment. They captured and contained in the parking lot, which was really good news. But with that, in North Canton, when we run into those things with our hydraulic fluid, the good news is that we do not use the normal hydraulic fluid, we use vegetable oil. So that when there is a line break, it's all biodegradable. So if we were to spill thirty gallons of hydraulic fluid on a roadway or a parking lot, the vegetable oil works great. And then lastly, we do have our Sergeant John Ellington back in the room there. And he is the epitome of our police officers that stay in shape. He's part of the wellness program in North Canton, and he goes out to the impulse training. And he's an example to all of our young police officers and to all of our police officers that are staying strong and in shape and then ready to respond to the needs of the people in the community. And so we appreciate you doing that, and then you shed a lot of pounds too, in those workouts, haven't we?
Yeah.
So keep up the good work.
Where you been, John? Haven't saved you.
And Dominic goes there too, right?
Haven't saved you, John. I'll see you in the morning.
Director Deory.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did receive an emailing from Sheston Wilson from Johnson Controls, providing four references as requested. Two local references have case studies still pending, soon to be published, and handouts with two finished case studies were attached. References with case studies still pending was the Stark County Metropolitan Housing Authority. Total project size, eight million, approximately over twenty years, with the guarantee of annual energy savings of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The Lucas County Metropolitan Housing Authority, six point seven million project, guaranteed amount fifteen point one million over twenty years. We have a letter of reference from the Wicking County Board of Commissioners where they did a project, and it also specs on the University of Akron. So if you're looking for a place to call, there are a few places. On a note to the Park and Rec Chairman and the Ward Council Representative in Ward Three, got pictures of your new playground, it's supposed to be going into Eastwood Parks. Myself, Kathy Farina, Brian Hill, worked on this a lot, we reached out to different vendors. And I want to say that, you know, part of that came from a result of travel, the Deputy Director and I did to the Ohio Municipal League for conference and opportunity to interact with vendors from around Ohio. And they enabled us to broaden our network of who's out there in this space and what they do, and we were to reach out to them. A vendor up in Kyleford County area came down, showed us some stuff that we've never really seen around here. And I'll just pass that down to those who can look at that while I ramble on on something else. Just as a FYI informational thing that is available, Stark County Land Bank has a land utilization program called the Side Lot Disposition Program. This can come from homes that may have been abandoned, foreclosed upon, torn down, there's vacant lot. Somebody wants to build on an R fifty lot, so what do you do with the lot? This is a mechanism where perhaps the side owners, the other sides of these properties can enter into a program that would enable them to help maybe split that lot or acquire a lot full so that it can be maintained when it's just too small to build a lot. So we'll probably have an application come forward that the administration will have to review as part of this program. I just want to make sure that you are aware of it, because it's not something that's talked about very often. Time for some quarterly kind of numbers on solar speed signs. So just to give you my Google for all of it, it's available if you'll be able to email it to me. But just as an example, then say on Apple Grove, we look at the percentage of violators going more than five miles an hour over the limit. Westbound on Apple Grove, one point two percent. Eastbound, two point seven percent. Those are very well numbered by the way. On East Maple, westbound, four point two percent. The other direction, two point two percent.
And that's going down.
Yeah, the numbers are really, really encouraging. On Mark Ward, traveling northbound, nine point seven percent.
A little higher.
Higher. And we're still, as you know, we had a discussion the last time we talked about this, with the placement of the southbound sign for Mark Ward and how it might be picking up people who are traveling into the city from playing township. And so I've spent some time out there looking at that and kind of watching the sign, when does it light up, where are the vehicles are located? And that is probably what we'll probably want to relocate this spring, to give a little bit better of a reading on that. Because it's still reading pretty high, because they're catching people while they're in plane and the speed of the plane is higher. Well, that's a shout out to some residents that brought that to our attention. Okay, so Charlotte, heading west, seven point six percent. Portage coming east, twenty-three point six percent. So we know where we have to be.
Imagine if they weren't there. I mean, I mean, they're exposed to that, I believe, as well.
Five on Main Street, southbound on Main is one and a half percent, northbound on Main is six tenths of a percent.
Pat, on Glenwood, I know that sign is out for a while. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Pat.
Pat, Glenwood, the sign is out for a couple of weeks, I noticed it's on today, going down the hill towards west on Glenwood. Do you have any say in the sign, or did I disappreciate it?
Uh, I didn't, we didn't pull that one. Some of the signs were still tweaking, some of them have been affected by extraordinary cloud cover. The batteries haven't had a chance to recharge, so we're working on that. It requires us to go out and reset them, which we've had to.
Can I also add that, that also depends on the crossing signs, pedestrian crossing light signs. So if you get any calls from constituents that they aren't working, they have to do it that. The lack of sun, solar after so many cloudy days will cause those to not work. So if they press the button and it doesn't light up, we just have to send out non-hack, it's going to jaze, then they reset.
Imagine that, Ohio.
Yeah, northeastern light and solar lights.
The, your residents will be receiving in the next couple of weeks the notice from the electric aggregation program as to what the new rate will be, the city received through the process of securing a number of quotes for electric utility rates. So if those individuals are already enrolled, they will remain enrolled. If they wish to opt out, they'll have a letter, a form that comes with this, they can do that. So just want to let council know that that's happening. Council will also be receiving a referral from the Planning Commission on the North Canton City Schools for conditional use situation where they're built out. And I want to bring this up now because I know after these reports are done, you're gonna get into the setting of the council agenda for the next few weeks. If that's correct, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay, so, you know, they wish to commence with their construction when school lets out. And so we need to have everything done in this building that can put them in the position that they can begin that. And in order to do that, I am suggesting that we schedule a special meeting on April twenty-ninth, when you have a committee of a whole meeting, so that we could give another reading to this. You'll, unless you pass it on an emergency, but you'll do your first reading on February, probably starting on April twenty-second. This will be on committee next week. But you do your first reading April twenty-second, if you want to do it on emergency, that's fine. If not, then we would need to schedule April twenty-ninth as a second. May sixth, we're planning no meeting, and then on May thirteenth, you could give the third, the final reading and include that would be acceptable to the school, so I want to put that out there. And then likewise, if you are going to schedule a meeting for April the twenty-ninth, I would like to also add ordinance number twenty-eight nineteen and twenty-nine nineteen to that. That would be for the Johnson Controls, and hopefully council will have an opportunity to put that out. But they won't by that time, and we could give that process moving along. That concludes my report. Wanted some direction on this to lead to other items going.
You're requesting three readings for that, Pat? Did I hear you correctly?
I'm number, I'm giving, I'm trying to get what council wants to do. If you want to do one, an emergency for the school, so they can get moving, and have that knocked out of the way, that's fine. If you need to do this three readings, I think we need to have the third final reading on May thirteenth, because we're getting too close to that June construction interview, it's supposed to school being out.
Question, can we do an emergency unconditional use?
I don't know.
I'm sure you can.
Yeah, can we do that on conditional use?
I don't believe you can.
That's outside of my range. But why don't we look into that, figure it out?
We were talking about the need for a public meeting as well up here. We were, tend to have discussing the need for a public hearing hall as well.
We decided, um, yes, and this is the conditional use permit for the playhouse. May thirteenth, we have the Howard Whitworth zoning as well as the one-four supervisor for Director of Permits. We could perhaps schedule for the twentieth, just before the committee of a whole, a public meeting. Get that already, so we have that satisfied.
You don't think we can put three on the thirteen?
Well, scheduling, this one was going to run.
We've got thirty days.
Within, well, we've already gotten it with the schedule, with the plasatory, I think it's. I don't recall the date. I think it's, I don't recall the date, but it's really soon. The exact date is either, we just had it first, come on with the day, and then I don't believe they will give us that.
Pat?
Can we do a special meeting during the week to do the third reading? We need our first meeting for a very particular.
Right, I'd say that.
Why don't we have two maps now for us on a calendar? And then get that to us soon.
Well, if, I had already mapped it out, and that's, Patrick and I spoke earlier today. And if you do a special meeting on the 29th, then you'll have plenty of time to get your three readings.
And we'll have, okay. And we'll have a public hearing in advance of the first reading, correct?
No, a public hearing can't be until at least the 20th to get it published in half a thirty days. So you will have had all three, or you'll have had two readings. Or you'll have had all three, excuse me.
They just passed that last week.
All right. Well, let's just go, we have to do, but then this is for the theater?
Yes, for the Playhouse Theater. This is the first opportunity we had a meeting following, for the conditional use.
So you would have first reading on the 22nd, second on the 29th if you do a special, and third reading on the 13th, and then the hearing on the 20th. But that puts the hearing after the third reading.
So you can get that.
No.
It has to be going the same way, or before.
So you could do a special on the 20th after the hearing to do the third reading rather than on the April 29th.
I believe we are going to have the 29th, so we are having the 6th.
Correct, correct.
So we have the first reading 22nd, second reading on the 29th. And you're saying we can do the public hearing on the 13th? And have a third reading then?
We don't believe there's time to get it published in half a thirty days.
So the power does it take to get it published? I mean, that's a 13th, what's, it's going to be the night tomorrow.
Well, we have 30 days and a few days. This one that's already scheduled for 6:30, perhaps we could get it on for the 13th, 6:15. So we have.
Oh, yeah, I thought.
Three items.
Yeah. Give me 2:15 minutes, that's what I asked you.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So when I look at.
I'll do it on the other end.
At 6:15.
And if that's the case, the third reading would be the 13th.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you need to vote for this?
Yeah, so while we're there, let's go ahead, let's go fresh. We definitely want to add a special council meeting, April 29th, following committee of the whole. For ordinance 28 and 2919, and this conditional use, first reading, second reading.
Second reading.
Second reading. Okay, there's their motion, the second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So we have that special council meeting, 29th, your. And that's really all we have to do right now until.
Do they need to vote to do a public hearing?
Yes, I'll show, okay. 6:15 on May 13th, less this for the conditional use for the Camp Playhouse.
Yep, conditional use for the Camp Playhouse, public hearing, May 13th, 6:15.
I'll make that motion. Okay.
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Just to set the stage for that, we did have that meeting last week. It was in addition to approving the preliminary and the final plans. And it simply was the school, there was one resident that asked a couple of questions for the developer, but there was no one speaking in opposition. The conditional, essentially it's revamping it but not increasing its footprint, so it should not impact the residents' funding. We did have a discussion with them that, curiously, the North Canton Hoover High School, the large, flat, guess how it's zoned, it was R-70. And so the suggestion was because there's actually at least three flats that make up that area. The very front of it, where they have a practice field, that's a parson institution. There's just a little sliver of a parcel there, and then the large parcel. So Mr. McGinnity and I looked that over and we made the suggestions to the school that it's not going to help right now, but for future zoning issues, it's probably a good idea to go ahead and re-flat those, put all the flats into one, and then rezone it as it should be in parson institutions. And that should solve any future uses that may be conditional committed.
Pat, are you done?
I was done, sir.
All right, next up, Director of Finance, Laura.
Thank you, just a couple of updates for you. A couple of weeks ago, we had Rita Tax Day here at City Hall. We helped about 100 residents get their city income taxes done for free, including two key slings.
Thank you, Dick.
Came in, so that was very good. We continue to have about a week left in tax season. We have forms out here on the front, but if you still needs one, or your easiest option is still to go to ritaohio.com and file there. We continue to have people come in every day with questions and concerns, and we try to do the best we can and get them to Rita. We've also been working on our automated meter reading project through utility billing and working with the water distribution department with Brian Hill. Those tower units have gone up on top of our water towers, those have been turned on. They're transmitting radio signals to, they're called smart points, little boxes that are being put out on the homes. We have about 700 of those out in the field right now. And we have about a 90% success rate on the first try of pulling reads from those. So it's doing very well. And the distribution staff continues to go out every day. Every time they make a service call, or, you know, turn on or off water for a reason, they're putting one of those smart points out. And as Catherine said, we're working on getting our summer staff, so we'll have two people dedicated just to getting those smart points out. And then they bring the information back here to the billing staff, and they get that through the computer so that all the accounts are reading as they should. So that'll be a big help to the distribution staff in the long run. Those folks will be able to transition into other roles because they won't need to be reading beaters 15 days a month and walking the entire city. So that's exciting for them. And then finally, a little bit of bad news on the technology front. And I know everybody's going to think, this is because we talked about lots of money for moving and technology, but I can assure you that when the person came in to help me with this system last week, we tested it two times, it worked perfectly both times after we changed the setting. Tonight it did not work, Catherine did not get the subscription on the phone. I asked her, we were messaging, I said, can you pop down there and try it again, start it, stop it? Did not work. So once again, we did not livestream on YouTube this evening. We have the audio recording and obviously the recorder, but we did not stream successfully.
We're chucked.
Got chucked here.
And we have the straw, it's going to stay as well. So we'll continue to work on it. I think we'll have ATNET come in perhaps and look at it again and see what we can do. But it is a mystery to me. It worked sort of for planning commission last week, but Chris, the clerk of those meetings, didn't think it was working until she got a message from her husband and said, hey, this is on. So it was just very touchy, and I'm not sure why.
Well, we're still very forward thinking. In the meeting last week, people were saying that North Canton was ahead of the times for streaming because so many other entities do not. So the fact we still have all these other backups is a good thing. And it's a testament to us that we stream, so we'll get it right.
We'll keep trying. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Director Wall.
Yes, sir. Having had a first-hand account survey with the two prior councilors, and in their absence, well, each of them had retired, so I have some first-hand account experience of what's necessary and required of clerk of council. One of those is the continuing frustration with some of the technology. I can assure you that some of it is that wide bundle that we have here. The findings director and I have each confirmed that there's an issue there. Perhaps it's not what's making this problem because some of the software protocol has changed between YouTube and the third-party software we have for streaming. And unfortunately, we don't receive the notifications that this protocol has changed. We find out afterwards. So I can say with that background and experience of what we've been to comparing the agenda to publish legislation, to track agenda through first, second, third readings, to schedule meetings, all of those things, that where we are right now with the findings director and her staff taking over the line share for sure, for certain of those duties, that it's my opinion that it's working very, very well. Director Brown is a bit of what you call the techie. And so she utilizes technology for increased efficiency and accuracy. And so I wanted to give her the kudos that she and her staff deserve in putting all this together for us. There's so much that happens behind the scenes and immediately afterwards, and ready for the next one. So I think in a very brief amount of time that she's herself and brought them up to what's necessary and as well as making improvements in utilizing technology for this purpose.
Thank you. Member Volz?
No report.
Mr. Rana?
No report.
Member Volz?
I have a report.
All right, let's hear it. Let's hear it.
First of all, I'd like to ask the repository to sign to North Canton, the headline writer for the Hall of Fame. I read with some dismay Mr. Tripp's recent letter to the editor. I think part of the frustration of citizens is that they don't get a response. Well, tonight, Mr. Tripp, you're going to get one. First of all, the clerk's position was widely advertised in multiple venues. Fact of the matter is, the applications were reviewed separately, not by one, but by at least two of our professional staff. One is the Director of Finance, and the other was the Assistant Director of Administration, an individual who has significant HR background. If each of those individuals individually and separately selected a candidate, that candidate received an interview by the professional staff. And then having successfully completed those interviews, moved to an interview with members of council, Stephanie, Mark, and myself. We had two candidates. Now remember, we were looking for a professional clerk, and there are very specific standards associated with that position. We had two candidates, one who was clerk, a second who had some administrative experience. Fact of the matter is that after the interviews, the three of us could not come to a consensus. And we believe, I think, and I don't speak necessarily for Mark or Stephanie, but my sense was that if we were not agreed, then we should not proceed. The fact of the matter is, Larry, I think we all embraced certain lessons learned from our previous experience. What were they? Be familiar with the hire, really understand who we were hiring. Number two was take care with the onboarding. We had a position that central reports to council, and the council's not here. So we have a management issue. How do we bring a new employee on when we're not here? So the question was, and this is the critical one, how do we manage a clerk on a day-to-day basis, in and out, in absentia? If you look at the Higher Advice Code, section 507, you'll see that in townships, clerks are also the fiscal officers. Clerk treasure, now fiscal officer. But for years and years and years, certainly as long as I've been involved, it's clerk treasure. And I suspect when Bart Rodenmeyer wrote our charter in the 60s, she gave that authority for a finance director to serve as clerk. Why? Because if it all existed, the body didn't cope. In fact, today, if you look at our population, roughly 17,000, we're about a third the size of Plain and Jackson. Why didn't we have a better poll? I'm going to suggest the answer is why right in this room. We heard from one that she watched the meeting videos and was horrified by the disrespect that was shown to the elected officials. Her one is outlined, hostile work environment. We also know that there were clerks who were actively discouraged from applying. Okay? So you have to ask yourself, what clerk in her right mind would want to come in and risk her career here? Marketplace of work. So under the circumstances, as we sat here and Laura said, maybe there's a third way or you're willing to try it, the answer was, yeah, I think we need to look at that. I think Doug and I said, we would have preferred a full-time professional clerk, no bones about it. But frankly, and I can speak for no one else, I wasn't prepared to hire someone I wasn't absolutely comfortable bringing on board. I think we all know there were problems and issues in that office that are yet to be resolved. We hope to get to them. But the fact of the matter is, we needed someone who could hit the ground running, get us organized, and make it work over the short term. I think this was a pragmatic decision, certainly that's the way I look at it. And again, I don't speak for the other six, Eric. But I can tell you this, it sure as hell wasn't unethical, and it wasn't manipulative. Your words, not mine. And I might say, unfortunately, we're positives. I'm glad we had this clerk. She's good. And I appreciate the fact that she was willing to think out of the box, step up, and give us a solution, certainly over the short term, that would fill this void. Ideal? We'll find out. But the fact of the matter is, what we have is not altogether different than what exists right now in Plain and Jackson Township.
Exactly.
It's exactly what they have. And so to report that somehow this was conjured up, manipulative, unethical, I think is simply false. It doesn't comport with the facts. Again, if we're going to be honest, we all understand we had an issue, it got taken care of. I frankly told people, it wasn't going to be neat or pretty for a period of time. Is it ideal? Maybe, maybe not. But the fact of the matter, again, I come back to this, is I'm going to defend this clerk over here. She didn't manipulate anything. I give her credit, this is exactly what we want. We want people who can think out of the box, be creative, keep the operation running. That, Mr. Peters, is my report.
That was a very good one, thank you.
That was good. It was going to be hard to follow.
Yeah, I was just going to say, do the report.
Aware.
Yes, I would agree 100% when I read that regarding someone who, we asked to think differently and above and beyond, it goes above and beyond. and above and beyond, and goes above and beyond, and to have that reported was, again, false. And there were other issues that happened when we were looking. It's not normal to have pervading minutes. We have researched this. You can't find people that can do pervading minutes. So there were many issues when we were looking at it. And that was one of the things when we said, well, what do we want in a clerk? Does it have to be what it's been for 50 years? No. The times have changed and it's time that we look at things differently. And we wanted a clerk that possibly could think outside the box as well and not just spend approximately three days doing pervading minutes when we still have sound and tight, and we typically have either Chuck's or ours video. So we did think about that and we all talked about that a lot. So we're gonna continue to look at it and we gave ourselves a time period to look at this and to think differently. And I wouldn't be surprised if other entities are looking at us going, good job, way to use your resources, way to think of someone that's in-house, who wanted more responsibility, who wanted maybe a change. And Stephanie, can I take a look at this? And Laura, bravo to you for letting someone in your department look at it a different way to maybe move in a different direction. So thank you for all you've done and hopefully we'll continue to think out of the box and move this community forward.
Wow, you guys are killing me here. Okay, so let's make it more interesting. So they just had a gas tax, which will generate $300,000 a year in North Canton. So I propose on the record that that $300,000 goes towards streets, alleys, and sidewalks for next year. So I just need you to be thinking about that now.
There you go, Laura.
If you think about it, we had the arctic blast, so all roads, I want streets, alleys, affect the whole city, all the people coming and going. So it's a benefit to all. And then when you think about the busy roads, we want to focus on the polymer, a little bit more expense for the long-term Paul. So for example, the arctic blast destroyed the roads that are just regular blacktop. Because when you do a band-aid approach and they mill an inch and a half off and lay a nice fresh coat, a lot of people don't realize, that's just band-aid. So as soon as it gets to zero, it blows apart, you know? So I'm suggesting, let's get the infrastructure in place here. Because I mean, really, I mean, 580K, I mean, that doesn't even redo a whole one road. Look how much it's gonna cost to do, whoever, a million bucks to take it all the way down. That's one road to do it all the way down. So I'd like to see a million dollars given next year for my budget, and I'd like to see some sidewalks done. And then let's work on a sidewalk plan and mix in whatever we could call streets, alleys, and sidewalks. What do you say? All right, so the gas tax, we won't feel the impact from our pocket, we're building impact on our car maintenance.
Give it Chris's time.
Okay, so we're over.
Chris said, Chris said it works.
Okay, so it affects all roads in the city.
Got it.
Are we in?
We're done.
Got it.
All right, that's all I have for you.
Nice job, Doug.
Thank you.
Quite proud to remember Volz.
Well, I couldn't keep up with that. That was powerful.
Yeah, what I was like, we have anything?
What's that? We gotta keep it up.
Do we?
Yeah.
What happened?
We have the singular item for the...
Is that it?
Yeah.
We're looking to have conditional use.
Yeah, conditional use.
Or talk about.
Discussion, yeah.
Thinking of looking to my...
We have a little discussion right now. Okay, five calls, three business, council. We will not be meeting in executive session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I oppose.